It's like church, Andrew. Everybody gets quiet when it starts getting to the time.
Okay, good morning. Today is June seventeenth. It's nine AM. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Superior. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Robert Thayer.
Here. Well, good morning, Andrew. Thank you for coming. So would you all please rise in location from Andrew Cromwell, Moni Church?
Good morning, everyone. Let's bow our heads and pray this morning. Father, we are so grateful that we get to come and invite you to be here and invoke your name because we acknowledge God this morning that you are God and that we are not, that we are in need of your great wisdom. We desire this morning the peace that surpasses all understanding, Lord, as we consider all the things that the world is experiencing today. We are in, once again, reminded of our desperate need for a God that actually knows some things and is not surprised by the events that we're facing. And so today, Lord, we seek your wisdom for this meeting and for all those items that are on the agenda, Lord, we just ask for your guidance and your goodness to be extended. Lord, thank you for this county, for the great bounty that is exemplified in its fields. Lord, we ask for blessing over every business, over every farm, Lord, today, over all the affairs that will be covered. We just ask for your engagement in your life. Lord, I am reminded of the technological challenges that we're facing this morning, and we just ask even that you would, you would work those out and give us favor in that regard. Lord, thank you for the board, for their families, and for all the leadership that they represent. We ask for your blessing today. We pray this in your name. Amen.
It's all me, which is my favorite flag. Eddie.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice for all.
At this time, we'll go to unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any items of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to appropriate staff. Right of which are on the agenda, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the board on, as each item is brought up for discussion. Speakers should limit their comments to two minutes or less. Thank you. Do we have any written comments?
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker card I have is Raymond Douglas III.
Morning, Raymond.
Hey, good morning.
You got some pins there.
Yeah, I like to collect them. I just want to address the county that we have a crisis of homelessness, and we need to get together and do something about it. I want to run for council member in my district for the city of Hanford, and I want to tackle it at the city level, and if we're successful, then we can go ahead and tackle it at the county level. You have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Love Keys.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. Kristi Love Key, Kings County Behavioral Health. I just wanted to come back after some of the comments I made at the last meeting and just correct one of them. I said that Anchors was a local boarding care. It's actually Willow Glen, Casadell, Rio. I always want to say Casa de Rio. Is our local boarding care. Anchors is a permanent supportive housing location. So just correcting that response. And then also to report that I did look at the B chip, round two unmet needs funding that's out to assist cities, counties, tribal entities, nonprofits and for profits in building infrastructure to kind of tackle, you know, behavioral health needs for communities up and down California, and it does not include boarding cares in the listing. So that is not a way to help us kind of attract boarding cares locally. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have. It doesn't appear anybody online has their hand raised.
Nobody online? Anybody in the audience that could add to our meeting today? Seeing done, we'll move on. So we'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes. Report out of closed session from regular meeting, June tenth, twenty twenty five.
There was nothing to report from the June tenth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from regular meeting, June tenth, twenty twenty five. Move by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayer.
Yes. I have a favor. Thank you very much. Item four, consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter listed as one motion. And any board member has a question, they can remove an item at their pleasure. Put your best pleasure. Motion by Supervisor Valley, second by Supervisor Nevs. Do we have any questions from the audience? Any concerns? Nobody online? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Zero. At this time, we'll go to regular counter. We've got Matthew Boyet, and it's going to be the recommended budget presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kiriya Martinez, County Administrator Officer, Kings County Administration. Before you this morning is the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six recommended budget. The overall recommended budget totals five hundred seventy one million, four hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty five, which is about ten point eight million more than last year's adopted budget. The general fund budget is four hundred and four million, two hundred and eighty two thousand, one hundred and twenty, or approximately eight million more than last year's adopted budget. Total recommended positions are sixteen hundred ninety four point fifty one full-time equivalent positions, which is a net decrease of fifteen positions over last year's budget. This is primarily the result of focusing on operational efficiencies, implementing the comprehensive classification and compensation study, and remaining financially prudent in anticipation of uncertain fiscal impacts at both the federal and state level, including global and regional economic pressures. The California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERS, continues to be a primary factor in the county's budget. CALPERS provides a defined benefit retirement plan, a pension to county's public safety and general employees. Both the county and current employees contribute to the CALPERS plan, and the county's annual contribution for all employees to pay for the planned benefits is projected to continue to increase significantly over the next several years. Each year, CALPERS provides a valuation of county's planned assets, which includes actuary determined from the contribution for the following year. These reports are subject to fluctuations in the assets of the plan due to investment returns earned by CALPERS and changes in the county's retiring employees. Due to the growing unfunded liability based on these factors, the county required, is required contributions have increased from thirty nine point eight percent to forty two percent for safety employees, but have decreased from twenty five percent to twenty three percent for non-safety employees for fiscal year, for next year. Although the rate for non-safety employees decreased by approximately one percent, the rate for safety employees increased by almost two and a half times to three point one percent. With safety rates already being substantial portion of employee salaries, any increases to these rates have a significant impact to the county budget. Property tax and sales tax and use tax have been increasing by minimal amounts over the years, which is a vital funding source of general government services such as public safety and social services programs. However, this recommended budget reflects anticipated decrease in sales and use tax as we continue to face impacts of continued high inflation rates, high interest rates, and a slowing of overall economy as various economies react to uncertainties around policies of new administrations. Realignment funds face challenges as the economic factors impact realignment and not making the base, which Matthew will go over in the presentation. Therefore, providing no growth in funding for counties who rely on realignment as primary funding source for mandated local match funds for entitlement programs. As realignment continues to fail to meet base and not provide additional growth funding, other general funds are needed to supplement this reduction, causing further strain on a general fund. Although the recommended budget reflects a slight increase in all property taxes, current operations continue to far outpace the minimal growth in property tax revenue. As the state and federal continues to reconcile their budget constraints and deal with the impacts of wildfires, governmental efficiencies agenda, and overall economic uncertainties, programs have previously been entirely funded by the state, may begin to require county contribution to current levels of services in addition to the increased required county contributions. Functions such as welfare and public safety would be impacted the most. As the county faced extreme workforce challenges over the past several years, your board addressed these concerns by implementing a significant salary and benefit increase in amounts not seen in many years. This was a result of completion of a comprehensive classification and compensation study to carry out in order to ensure employees not only properly compensated, but compensate in a way that makes Kings County the preferred employer. Implementing such significant increases to the county's largest expenditure is not without challenges. The salary and benefits increases implemented far outpace the historic growth in revenues to use such expenditures, making classification and compensation impacts the most significant to this recommended budget. Other impacts reflected in the recommended recommendation are continued increases to our liability and self-insurance function. It should be noted that the general fund contingency outlined later is heavily supplemented with one-time funds, which will not be available or so for supplement contingencies in the following fiscal year. Supplementing the general fund contingencies was necessary due to the growing negative relationship between current expenditures, annual operating expense, far outpacing the current revenue, the annual revenue. Of the ten point six million general fund contingency that will outline later, about eight point five percent or about eighty percent is comprised of one-time funds as outlined. The following year, these one-time funds will not be available and will continue to create additional pressures on the general fund. This recommended budget takes various challenges into account. One significant step taken in the recommended budget to address long-term sustainability and financial health to the county is a reduction of overall employees, the likes of which we have not seen in approximately seven years. Although this is a significant step in the right direction to ensure the county remains efficient and sustainable, the county will need to continue to work towards ongoing sustainable strategies addressing lasting impacts due to unfunded mandates, inflation, and economic factors. I would like to extend my appreciation to my staff and those others in, who assembled the budget, as well as department heads and their respective staff who continue to assist us in balancing the budget. It's not no easy task, and we start every year in the fall and to lead up to this day today. A staff that does deserve special recognition today is Matthew Boyet, Deputy CAO, Veronica Mello, Michael Amon, Alex C. Walker, Giselle Coit, all administrative analysts, Sarah Poot, Risk Manager, Christine Alvera, Executive Assistant to CAO. Other deserving recognition include, but certainly not limited to Eric and Rob from the Department of Finance. Thank you both, as we always go back and forth on these conversations with the budget. I will now pass a floor to Matthew Boyet as he will go through the presentation. We went through it yesterday, and it'll probably be about forty minutes. But I wanted to start off by reading the budget message that we presented in your recommended budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Matthew Boyet, Deputy County Administrator Officer, Kings County Administration. Next slide, please, Alex. So I just want to give you a quick overview of what we're going to be going over today. Similar to the format that we've had in the past, so I'll kind of go over some of the key issues impacting our budget as well as the different forms of the budget equation that we look at year over year. In addition to the charts within our budget that outline graphical representations of shares of funding sources and expenses that we have, going over our position allocations, which is all of our staff here in our workforce at the county. And then, as Kiriya mentioned earlier, some future budget strategies and things looking ahead into fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven, as we continue to plan for the future. And then we'll wrap it up with next steps and then see if there are any other questions at that point. Next slide, please. So here, just want to outline some key issues that are currently facing the county right now, and these aren't new to us and they're not issues that the county alone are facing. In a lot of our consortium and regional circles across the state, everybody is facing similar challenges to us. So we are not alone in all of these issues here, but just outline some of the key highlights here. Just in general, as mentioned previously, the, you know, annual revenue that we get is just not keeping pace with the exponential increase on the expense for the county operation due to the demand for our services here at the county level. And as mentioned prior, the implementation of the Coffin Associate Study has had some significant increases to not only the overall salaries, but also the benefit costs to employees by way of the pension liabilities that come with those salary increases. We're seeing an increase in workers' compensation and liability claims against the county, and then increases to our in-home supportive services function, which, for those that don't know, those are the folks that they're paid to take care of their loved ones in the home rather than sending those loved ones to, you know, long-term care facilities and the like. So we are seeing significant increases there. And on the jail and juvenile healthcare and mental healthcare side, again, statewide, many, many counties and jurisdictions are seeing substantial increases in this space. You know, as we've, we've seen since, you know, the inception of COVID, just, you know, healthcare across the board has skyrocketed, and so the, our jail and juvenile services are not without impacts in that area as well. And then entitlement programs and our human services agency, so these are the entitlement programs where if residents qualify for certain entitlement benefits, they are granted those benefits, and there are mandated and required local cost shares for each of those benefits on different funding ratios. And so jurisdictions have to use their own local funding sources, whether that's, you know, realignment funding or general fund to provide for those local cost shares. And so as those demands for those entitlement programs increase, so do the cost shares accordingly on local counties and local jurisdictions. Water continues to be a primary focus and a primary impact in the county. As your board is well aware, but just for those in attendance and online that aren't aware, your board did recently take control over the Mid-Kings River Groundwater Sustainability Agency, or the Mid-Kings River GSA, as we call it, to remain and maintain local control of our most vital resource here in the county and to preserve agriculture as we look to implement the state's, you know, overarching sustainability measures of sigma. And so that, you know, as you've assumed the role of the Mid-Kings River GSA, also, you know, that, the liabilities of the GSA also are now borne at the county level as well. So and then a couple of last things here on the minimum wage front. So, you know, we are continually impacted by minimum wage increases that are driven by factors outside of our control, such as the Consumer Price Index. So as that continues to increase and fluctuate, we will see impacts on minimum wage as well that we will have to address. And then just the overall economic pressures as, you know, there's tons of uncertainty, both at the local, state, federal, and global level on the economy front, you know, as those things begin to shake out and settle may have some key impacts around the budget. Next slide, please, Alex. So this slide is just a graphic representation of a ten-year look back of where we've been in our county workforce. So looking back at fiscal year sixteen seventeen, we had a county workforce of a little over fifteen hundred employees. And so over that course, you know, we're, in the current fiscal year now, fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, we've now grown to a little over seventeen hundred employees. So that signals, again, our growing workforce to keep up with the service demand of the services provided in the community. However, as previously mentioned, in the recommended budget before you this morning for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, we are seeing a fifteen FTE reduction in our overall FTE, and we haven't seen reduction like this in about seven years. So every year, we always see a slight uptick in FTE to try to keep up with the demand of the services. But this year, something, again, we haven't seen in roughly seven years, we're actually recommending a decrease in the staffing levels here at the county. So just want to call to your attention, the overall total cost of salaries and benefits built into the recommended budget before you this morning is about two hundred and seventy five million dollars. And so with our entire budget at about five hundred and seventy one million, our salaries and benefits are almost half of our entire operating budget. So easily the largest categorical expenditure in our county. And again, that is not uncommon. That is, you know, a wide trend in just about every business you see. Next slide, please. And this, this slide here shows a three-year look back of the annual growth rate in our general fund revenues and how that relates to our annual growth, growth rate in the net county cost that we see by department. And so what the net county cost is is that is the difference between what a department's revenue is versus what the department's expenses are. So if a department's expense far exceeds the revenue, then there's going to be a net county cost or a draw on our general fund revenue. So negative numbers there in the net county cost section in the red, that means that is a draw on the green figures above for the revenue. So the main thing I want to highlight here with this slide is just to highlight the fact that over a three-year period, you know, we're seeing growth in our general fund revenues of about eleven and a half percent. And conversely, the growth on the expense side that actually draws on that general fund revenue over that same three-year span is growing at a little over thirteen percent. So again, you know, further highlighting the fact that we are seeing the expenses far outpace the growth of our revenue. Next slide, please. Although we do have some positive news built into this recommended budget, some of which, although, you know, albeit positive, it is, you know, one-time good news. So, you know, we did pay off our pension obligation bonds, and we had money left over in that fund that we had. So we were, you know, collecting fees accordingly to pay off those bonds. And so once those bonds were paid off, we had a balance of about two point eight million dollars left in that fund that we're able to bring into this current recommended budget and infuse it into our available funding sources. And in addition to that, we are seeing some projected revenue growth in the current fiscal year on the general fund side up from the last fiscal year of just shy of five percent. And then we're looking at another, you know, three point nine nine percent increase going into fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Do want to have one correction here on the record on the fly here. The third bullet point there says a FEMA reimbursement for Stratford Levy work. That's actually reimbursed through the ARPA allocation we got. So just a typo there, my apologies. So we are infusing a million dollars of ARPA funding into the general fund to reimburse the expenses used to do work in the Stratford Levy as we dealt with the floods. And then lastly, there, we are seeing great news considering what happened last year. We are anticipating some decreases in our health insurance rates of about three point nine six percent. And so what that means is currently in the recommended budget right now, we actually anticipated for a ten percent increase. So in the final budget that we, that will be presented to your board here later in the summer, we're actually going to see a thirteen point nine percent decrease across the board in health insurance rates because we have to first get rid of the ten percent to get to a zero percent change in health insurance rates, and then an additional three point nine six percent decrease to realize the decrease in the health insurance rates that we know for now. So again, some positive news on the horizon given the challenges. Yes, sir.
Are those general fund dollars or mandated funds? I have to go back to a certain part.
For which?
If you're saying there's cost savings on the health insurance, if I heard you right.
Yeah, that's going to be decreases in the overall health insurance rates that the county would pay for on the employee side.
It's a savings to the county and their respective budget units.
Right. Next slide, please, Alex. Fantastic. Thank you. So there are some things that are impacting the recommended budget before your board this morning. Right there at the top, we have the net county cost increases on our human services agency. So since the last fiscal year of twenty three, twenty four, we're seeing about a twenty two point six six percent increase in our net county cost. And so in our current fiscal year right now, the net county cost in our human services agency is a little over three point five million, which is a two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollar increase from last year. And then looking ahead to the recommended budget before your board this morning, that net county cost is a little over four million dollars, which is a four hundred and seventy six thousand dollar increase from the current fiscal year. So with that, over the last two fiscal years, you know, that's, that's where we get a total increase of just about seven hundred and forty four thousand dollars. Again, we're continuing to see significant increases to our salary and benefits, primarily driven by the implementation of the Coffin Associate salary and classification study that was done. We're seeing in the recommended budget, we're anticipating an increase of a little over twenty million dollars in that recommended budget from where we are today. And then again, as I mentioned, we are seeing some general fund impacts, some increases there due to our liability and self-insurance costs there to the tune of about three point six, six million dollars. So currently in this fiscal year, we anticipate a little over a million and a half dollar increase in that. And then looking ahead at the twenty five, twenty six recommended budget, an additional two point, two point one three million dollar increase there. So on the hazardous waste taxes side, we are seeing that stay pretty flat. So we're not seeing much growth in that revenue stream. And then a lot of our one-time funds that we've been relying upon to, you know, keep us, you know, keep us steady and whole over the last few years, primarily ARPA funding that is falling off now that the pandemic is over. And then lastly, a couple of points here, just overall general public safety overtime as, you know, has been compounded due to the increases in wages from the Coffin Associate Salary Study, and then just increases in the cost of our information technology services across the board of our internal service fund here at the county. Next slide, please. So we have some potential impending budget impacts that are not known at this time, but as they finalize, they could have some impacts that we will have to make adjustments and realize in the final budget that's presented before your board later in the summer. So we have some fire contracts. So currently, we're out of contract with the city of Avanale for our fire services agreement. And then our fire services agreement with the city of Corcoran will be out of contract July one of twenty twenty six. So with that, again, as I mentioned earlier, impacts as a result of the takeover of the Mid-Kings River GSA, we are going to see and anticipate some impacts going into the recommended budget here of roughly five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we are in renegotiations with two unions. It's going to be our prosecutors' union and our fire union. So we are out of contract with them as of July one of this calendar year. So pending the results of those renegotiations, those impacts are not built into your recommended budget before you this morning. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, our in-home supportive services, again, those are the, the folks that provide and take care of their loved ones in the home versus long-term care facilities, renegotiations with wages in that sector as well. And then just the growing lawsuits that, you know, continue to happen, and we continue to deal with at the county level. And then again, our minimum wage impacts that we do not have control over that are driven by the Consumer Price Index as a result of Senate Bill Three. So they can increase upwards of three and a half percent maximum, depending on how well the Consumer Price Index does. So again, things we don't have control over. Yes, sir.
So before we go to the next page, the fire contract in Corcoran Avenue unreimbursed cost, do we have a number for that? Or can you say it today?
So currently in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, under the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four dollar amount for the city of Avanale, I don't have the exact figure of the dollar, but it's hovering somewhere around six hundred thousand.
Maybe we should do a study session to know exactly where we're at. A lot of controversy with the social media and the meeting and stuff, so we know exactly where we're at, so we don't get ourselves in trouble. That'd be in the future, do like a study session before we move on with the budget in August.
And I, Mr. Chair, I believe, I believe all that's going to be taken care of. I think if we're talking about this year, whether it's six hundred thousand or four hundred sixty thousand we have now, and then one point one million and change for next year, right, or the next fiscal year, I think all that's going to get a loving, that'd be pretty good.
I think we should have a study session so all five board members are on the same page with the new fire chief when he comes on board next week. And I know Robert's new, Rusty's fairly new, so it'd be good to know exactly what the history is and where we're going and what to expect. And a lot of social media stuff, so we want to make sure we react to the proper numbers and the proper ideas.
And that would be appropriate from a Brown Act perspective as well, Mr. Chair.
And then just lastly, the last bullet point there, just any legislative impacts. Again, lots of uncertainty at both the state and federal level there that are unknown at this time. There's lots of anticipation, lots of hearsay, but, you know, there, there's just a lot of uncertainty politically right now, both at the local and state levels that could have, you know, severe impacts moving forward on local government such as ourselves. Next slide, please. On this slide, I just want to give you a general overview of the county's overall financial position over the last, over the last period of a post-recession um over the last period of a post-recession decade. So within that time span, uh we've seen an increase, uh an average annual increase in our revenues of about seven point three-one percent. Again, a caveat to that, um as is a reoccurring theme in this presentation, um that was heavily supplemented by one-time funds once the pandemic hit, both by way of uh the CARES Act funding, and then after that, the ARPA funding that um contributed to those uh in the that growth rate in revenue. Um through that same time period, on the expense side, we've seen an average annual uh increase in our expenditures of seven point six-four percent. Um again, so that's slightly far outpacing our revenue growth there. So what that's resulted in is we are anticipating our fund balance to decrease at the end of this current fiscal year here, at the end of this month, um about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, um which illustrates the negative relationship between um the expenses outpacing the revenue growth um to support those expenses. Um next slide, please. So here, I just want to go over the overall budget process of where we've been since the winter of last year, all the way up until now, and kind of where we're gonna be throughout the summer and fall of this calendar year. So we had the initial twenty-four, twenty-five end-of-the-year estimates submitted to us by departments in December. And so that was the departments telling us where they anticipate to end by the end of this fiscal year. So that way, we know what we have to start with, looking ahead at the twenty-five, twenty-six recommended budget, so we can use that information to make uh well-informed decisions on the recommendation that we're gonna put forth uh before your board. And so with that, um a few months later in February, or a couple of months later, rather, the departments submitted all of their budgetary requests to us. And so based on the estimates, the initial estimates that we got from departments in December, uh they were very concerning. We had a lot of negative relationships between the size of the expense versus the estimated size of the revenue to support that expense. So we went back to departments and had them revise their estimates um in February. Um and then, so with that, again, we still had some concerns after that as we're still trying to work through developing a recommended budget with all of these fiscal constraints. And as we waited for more and more months of actuals to actually hit the books and clear up a lot of the unknown picture, we had additional uh revised estimates from departments uh due to us in May. And so that's what's uh informed us about the recommended budget before your board this morning. And so here we are this morning, June seventeenth, with the recommended budget. And uh roughly, I mean, we're we're working off of estimates right now based on the department's best guess as to where they anticipate to end. And so the county books will close, and Eric and Rob, please correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but it'll close roughly sometime the end of July, early August sometime. And at that point, the books will have closed, we will have known um what actually happened in the fiscal year, and we no longer have to guess. And so with that information, we can then know for certain where we ended and for certain what we have to start with um with our final budget that we bring forward, which we plan on having final budget hearings August twenty-fifth, which is a Monday. So it's a little different than within our traditional Tuesday regular meeting schedule, but keeping with uh um uh you know, recent uh tradition of having final budget hearings on Monday. And then uh pending any action by your board at that meeting, we'll be uh back before your board there on September sixteenth to bring you the final uh budget resolution and uh an actual printing of the final budget books incorporating uh any action your board has from the uh final budget hearings there.
Hey, Matt, I just have, I just have a quick question to the chair. Um so when you're, when you're talking about the estimates, you know, I get it that all the departments are are estimating. Do we have a, do we know what that number is, like in the past, like with the twenty-four, twenty-five, what the estimate number was versus what the actual number is? And is there, is there a trend? Is it, are the, are the fiscal analysts guessing, you know, like ten percent, five percent, three percent?
So every department does that differently, and we have seen uh different ways of of accounting for those estimates. So we've actually incorporated a training annually now at the beginning of the fall to help assist staff in how to accurately make those projections. We've been doing it the past two years, but to answer your question of there, can you see what was estimated to actuals? Absolutely, yes. There's a report that is produced by Finance. Um Rob has an item coming, Finance has an item coming next week to balance the budget. And so they have um instructions that they provide that report before they balance it, so you could see where the estimates land. And then in August, we'll get another of those updates, and you can see exactly where the departments were um off. And so we are having those discussions with the department heads on where are the staff landing on their estimates to their their budgets.
So so in regards to that, is it, is it typically in the benefit of the county that that fiscal analysts are, you know, overestimating, send you in a number just to protect their own budget and and?
It's, you can answer that two ways, because historically, it has been to the benefit of the good. So they're overestimating, so then by the time the books close, then you're getting a higher fund balance. But it's really hard to make a budget when you have estimates that are inaccurate or so overinflated, because now you're cutting from the others' departments because you think you're gonna spend the money. So it is a bit a positive, but on the other end, it's hard to to create a balanced budget. And also, an issue with that is if their act, if those numbers are overrepresented, what if you have a new staff who underrepresents? So then the picture, once the books close in August, then it's to the bad.
Right, I was just looking at, just from a trend piece, that, you know, if it's ten percent, then maybe the
There, there
seven percent.
There is a way to do that calculation. We haven't looked at it, uh but historically, our fund balance, oh, our actuals come in way less than what they projected.
Yep. Next slide, please, Alex. Okay, so this slide is our general fund revenue equation. And so you're gonna see two columns there. On the left-hand side, that's our adopted budget uh in the current fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five. And on the right-hand side is what the departments requested for the uh budget in twenty-five, twenty-six. And then reading it uh top to bottom on both sides, we start with our fund balance. So the fund balance is essentially money that we did not spend in the prior year. So that's brought in to uh add to our available financing in order to support the uses or to support the operations. So with that fund balance, i.e. unspent uh unspent funds from prior year, we add that to current year revenue. So this is all the current year money that we bring in from all of our uh uh sales and use tax, property taxes, services, everything that we get on an annual basis, that gives us our grand total available financing that we have to spend. From that, we then have expenditures. So that's just our annual um operating costs, again, primarily driven by uh salaries and benefits for our uh workforce, roughly about forty-eight percent of um that expenditure there. And then any designation for reserves. So if we plan on putting any money away into reserves for a rainy day, we then account for that there. And then lastly, uh a contingency, which is essentially money that we set aside in the current year that we don't anticipate to spend. But if for some reason there is a margin of error in the budget, or there's an unexpected expense, we have that pot of money uh to pull from. So with that, on the left-hand side, uh I want to call your attention to the two red circles there in the current budget. Uh we have current year revenue of three hundred and sixty-six million and current year expenditures of three hundred and seventy-eight million. So why I have these circled here is just highlighting the fact that if we, if we spent every dime that we had at the end of the fiscal year and we solely relied on the annual revenue generated, we would not have sufficient financing to support the current scope of our operations there. And then looking ahead on uh um, looking ahead at the requested side for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we are seeing revenue increasing there from the current fiscal year of about three point two-five million dollars. However, on the expense side, we're seeing expenses increase uh just shy of twenty-five million. So that's a large uh, you know, negative relationship there in the growth of um those two categories there. So with that, the requested budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, again, this is what the departments requested um their budgets to be. Um we had an estimated fund balance of uh twenty-four million dollars and current year revenue of about three hundred and sixty-nine million. And with that, we had total expenditures of four hundred and three million and a contingency at negative nine point three million. So if you're wondering why we could possibly have a negative contingency there, well, that is because departments essentially requested to spend nine point three million dollars that we do not have. Um so in order to represent the equation in a balanced budget, we have to uh represent that contingency in a negative figure. So we, as a standard practice, like to have a contingency at a bare minimum of ten million dollars. Um and even at that, given the scope of our uh annual operating expenditure, ten million is still far too low. But even at that bare minimum, to get to that in the requested budget, we would not only have to cut the nine point three million dollar uh deficit, so that way we're at zero, but cut an additional ten million on top of that to get to a ten million dollar contingency. So we would essentially be working with over nineteen million dollars in cuts from the department's request. Um yes, sir.
So if I heard you right, you said going into building your proposed budget, um the feedback from department heads or requests was just over nine million dollars of money that we didn't have. So you had it um communicate that back to department heads to let them know now's not the time to be asking for whatever they were asking for.
Correct. So that's, that's what the, the requests coming in and the scope that they did, we didn't have the estimated revenue to support all of their requests. We were actually upside down to the tune of about nine point three million.
Think the board, not for this budget, cuz I know you guys put a lot of work in this, but maybe for next year, um you think the board could get a copy of those requests so we could look and work with our C O on um what, maybe what some of those things might be able to be prioritized? And I'd like to see what those tell me.
Okay.
Hi, Matt.
Yes.
So i- in a perfect world, too, we'd be building those contingencies, right? I mean, the best practices, didn't they recommend it? Should be in this seventy million, somewhere in there?
So that's um, I I think what you're referring to is the uh the reserve balance, which I'll I'll get to in a couple of slides here. Um as far as what the um Government Finance Officers Association or GFOA recommends, uh local governments have um as a reserve, which is roughly two months of operating expenses, which is seventeen percent of an agency's operating budget. Um so yes, you 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 are correct um that it's upwards of tens of millions in a reserve if we're keeping with the GFOA standards. Contingencies are a little different. Um that's more of a, you know, you're you're still setting it off to the side, not anticipating to spend, but it's there in case, you know, there's an unexpected expense in the current fiscal year that you didn't anticipate, or a a margin of error in the budget that you didn't anticipate, um so on and so forth. So a couple of different pots of money there, but yeah, you're, you're uh uh on the right track.
Thank you.
Yes.
I got one question, since we're talking about contingencies and 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 you you funnel two point eight from the the obligation bonds that were paid off back into. So that account, that account just sits out kind of in cyberspace, and we close it out, and there's two point eight million dollars in there. How many other accounts similar like that that do we need to take a look at and go, hey, look, what we're, what, you know, what's projected out and what we're putting in? There's, there's contingency dollars there that can get pushed over back actually into a reserve or contingency funds. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um so we do that kind of an informal practice. Um our director of finance actually reaches out to me and says, hey, um we have these money sitting in this outside fund, they're not being utilized. And so then we reach out to the department and we tell them, hey, um are you gonna use these funds? If not, we're gonna kind of pull them in, you know, into the general fund and then designate them that way. So it's more of informal. I mean, Eric and I, our finance director, had talked about, you know, creating some kind of committee to, you know, review these annually and some kind of more formal practices, but, you know, we we do what we can with with the staff that we have. And so if it, if there's something that your board desires, we can also do that. And but I I will tell you right now that we are looking at every single account line outside fund right now because of our budget issues.
Um two last points I want to make on this slide. Um calling your attention to the left-hand side in the current budget of twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see a designation for reserve of six point one million. That's what was uh projected to be um designated towards reserves when we brought the final budget to your board last fall. However, based on the estimates that the departments told us, where they estimate, uh where they uh project themselves to spend and where they project the revenues coming in respectively, we're not able to actually put any of that money away. It's all gonna be used up in current year operations. So yes, we did plan for that based on the information that we had at the time. However, given everything that's transpired in the current fiscal year, that money has now is estimated to since be spent on current year operations. So and then last point I want to make, again, off to the right, the two circles there. If we strictly relied on the annual revenue that we generate of six or three hundred and sixty-nine million to support the requests uh totaling four hundred and three million, we're actually at a deficit of thirty-three point nine-eight million dollars. So that um highlights the importance of our fund balance, because without it, we cannot support our current year operations. And essentially, the fund balance is, again, unused money from the prior year. So as we, you know, build these contingencies, again, that's money that we're saying, hey, we would like to not spend this because we need to have something to bring into the following year, because without it, the scope of our services would look vastly different. So, next slide, please. So with that, it's the same format budget equation. Information on the left-hand side remains unchanged, but the information on the right represents the recommended budget. That's before your board this morning. So we have an estimated fund balance of thirty-seven point one-two million and current year revenue estimated at three hundred and sixty-seven million, bringing total financing to four hundred and four million. So with that, we've cut the expenditures down accordingly and worked with departments to bring the recommendation forward of three hundred and ninety-three million dollars and did build a contingency of ten point six-six million dollars. However, a small caveat to that, which I'll get to in the uh next slide, um that ten point six-six million dollar contingency is heavily supplemented, as Kiri mentioned earlier, with one-time funds um that will not be available next fiscal year. So with that, um in the recommended budget uh compared to the current budget that we're uh working in right now, our revenues uh are estimated to grow about uh zero point eight-eight million dollars, while on the expense side, we anticipate those to grow a little over fifteen million dollars. Again, highlighting the uh very negative relationship between the growth uh in our revenues versus the growth in our expenditures. So again, solely relying upon our current year revenue to support our current year operations in the recommended budget, we would be at a deficit of a little over twenty-six million dollars there. Next slide, please. And this slide um highlights what makes up our contingency. So in the previous slide, excuse me, we had a contingency estimated of about ten point six-six million. So what makes up that contingency? So eight and a half, a little over eight and a half million of that um are the one-time funds that we've been speaking about. Uh one million of which, again, uh uh on the fly, uh edit our, my apologies, there are Stratford Levy, ARPA reimbursement, not FEMA reimbursement. Um and then the two point eight million dollars in our pension obligation bond uh fund balance there. And then uh Project Home Key FEMA reimbursements to the tune of about four point six million dollars. So all that added up is a little over eight and a half million dollars. So if we took that eight and a half million dollars away and solely relied on our natural general fund contingency, our contingency would be just about two point one million dollars. So again, that's a far cry from the bare minimum of the ten million that we like to see. And again, just to reiterate, the the ten million that that we aim for um is still far too low given the scope of services that we have here in the county. Next slide, please.
Hey, real quick, Matt?
Yes.
The, the one-time funds, like I understand there's a one-time fund for the revenues this year. But did we spend contingencies back in the day that this money is replacing?
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
I I think what you're saying is the fund balance has been just kind of carrying over, so it, I mean, it's all mushed into fund balance. So contingency usually primarily makes up the fund balance. So is it the exact same amount? Probably not, but I mean, it's just the same carryover.
Right, but the one, but I'm talking about specific to the one-time funds, the one-time funds this year. So I'd just say for the Stratford Levy, for example, so we're getting one-time funds of a million dollars, but is that just reimbursement because we spent the million dollars?
Correct.
So
And I do want to make a note on this. So you see that Home Key uh FEMA money, the four point six million dollars. So if the board were to take any additional actions with any of So if the board were to take any additional actions with any of the pending projects, with example, Triangle Courtyard, that is the funding source for that. So I'd like to highlight that because again, if those funds are to be designated elsewhere for additional projects, our contingency would drop that four point six million dollars.
I guess kind of my struggle is, and I don't, maybe it's not the struggles, not the right word, is that when we say one-time, these are one-time funds, but they're kind of like reimbursements, right? So like, hey, we've been reimbursed for money that we spent. Sounds a heck of a lot better than, oh, my gosh, what's, what's it going to look like next year? Because we only have these one-time funds. So if we don't, if we don't designate, if we don't spend a million dollars in an emergency, then we don't have to recoup a million dollars. And does that make sense? Am I on, am I on the right page with that?
Yes, it is. The only thing is that, you know, as you've seen with our fund balance, the, the, the expenditures just keep far outpacing it. So our fund balance is just getting smaller and our contingencies is just getting smaller. And it's, and so to tackle on those other issues, you know, it's just going to keep bringing that contingency lower and lower.
Got it. Thanks.
Next slide, please. So this is a chart that shows a fifteen-year history of the general fund budget equation. So it's the same budget equation that we were just looking at, but it just outlines it a little differently. So reading this left to right, you've got all the different fiscal years on your left-hand side. We go to then the fund balances that were budgeted in those fiscal years. Any cancellation of reserves that we infused in order to supplement financing for that particular fiscal year. And then we outline the current year revenue to get to the total available financing. From that, we then outline all of the uses or all of the operating expense, any designation for reserves and any contingencies that we have. And so you'll read that left to right, and then obviously, top to bottom is that exact relationship fiscal year over fiscal year over the last fifteen years. So I want to bring your attention to the very bottom. That's where we are today with this recommended budget of fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Again, it's the same figures that we saw on the prior budget equation, fund balance estimated to be thirty seven million and annual revenues of three hundred and sixty seven million for total available financing of four hundred and four million. With that, we have estimated operating or estimated uses of three hundred and ninety three million with our ten point six million dollar contingency. And so as you can see, over the last fifteen years, we started with a budget of about a hundred and sixty three million dollars. Fast forward fifteen years later, and we're now at a budget of over four hundred million. So pretty significant growth there on the uses side. So you can see on the uses side dating back fifteen years ago, we had a budget of about a hundred and sixty million. And here we are now just creeping up towards that four hundred million dollar mark, right there at three hundred and ninety three million. So over the course of that fifteen-year time span, although our contingencies have grown, so one might think, hey, you had, we had contingencies of three point eight fifteen years ago, and now you've built them up to ten point six million. Yes, in relation to, you know, one number to the next, you know, one might think, well, that's, you know, more than double or almost triple what we had back then, but it's all in relation to the uses. It's all in relation to your operating expense in that fiscal year. So if we look at that historically over this fifteen-year time span, our contingencies have been a little over three percent of our operating expense. In the current fiscal year, in the, excuse me, in the recommended budget that we have before your board this morning, that ten point six million in contingencies is just shy of that. So we're slightly less than average dating over the past fifteen years. And again, even at ten million, given almost four hundred million dollar operating expense, is still a contingency that is far too low. And again, Supervisor Robinson, to your point, want to highlight the, again, the G F O A, the Government Finance, Finance Officers Association recommendation for local governments to have a reserve, which is again, is different from contingencies. But as you can see there, on the right-hand side, we have that middle column there in between uses and contingencies called reserves. And so this is where the county would designate money to put into reserves. And so over the last handful of years, as we've been getting a lot of the one-time funding through the pandemic, through CARES and ARPA, we've tried to make those contributions to our reserves to build them up to, to sustainable standards and sta- standards that would help us be financially prudent in the coming years as the one-time funding would fall off and in, and in anticipation of concerning economic times. So as you can see, you know, for many, many years before that, we haven't had the ability to infuse reserves because it's all been used up in contingencies and operating expense. So not until we've been given this one-time funding have we been able to take advantage of that. Again, with the caveat of the current fiscal year we're in right now, that six point one million dollars. Yes, we did plan on that because we anticipated that that was going to be the picture at the time. However, here we are, you know, eleven months later, and that's not going to be the case, and we're not going to actually be able to put that away. So with that, again, to underscore your point Supervisor, G F O A recommends seventeen percent of an agency's operating budget. So for us right now, with our operating budget at three hundred and ninety three million dollars, that would mean that our county reserve would be about sixty six million. So right now, we're at, and that's, you know, again, that seventeen percent. So currently, right now, we're only at about three point three percent of our operating budget. So that's thirteen point six percent short or about fifty three million dollars short in our reserves from what we currently have in relation to our operating expense and what G F O A recommends that we should have. Next slide, please.
Hey, Matt, on that slide, though, is that blank? Under the reserves, is that because you're waiting for that number?
You mean in the recommended budget twenty five, twenty six?
Right, on that bottom line.
That's blank because we don't have the sufficient financing available to even designate money to reserves because we, again, in, you know, handful of slides before, we were working with a nineteen million dollar deficit just to fund a bare minimum contingency. So anything above the contingency, we could then potentially look at a reserve designation. But once we get to the bare minimum contingency, if there's nothing left over after that, then chances are a funding of designation for reserve is slim to none.
So you project that being blank?
Correct.
Okay.
This is the first year that we are not designating anything to reserves in about four years.
And just, just to remind me again, in that reserves, it's just under eleven, is that right?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, we should have sixty six point nine two million, and we're about fifty three million short.
We're not designating anything to reserves because we feel it's healthy enough to get through this year.
We're not designating to anything into reserve because we don't have enough monies to put into reserves.
So this slide here is a graphical representation of the various general fund departments and their share of the net county cost. And again, net county cost is the difference between the revenue that a department has versus the expenditures that a department has. So if a department has more expenditures than revenues, then they're going to have a draw on our general fund revenue, or they're going to have a net county cost. So again, you'll see left to right, you know, we have the highest users on the left and then going to the right after that. So again, no surprise, we see this trend every year. We have a lot of our public safety departments at the top, which continues to signal your board's priority on public safety and its importance in your community for the constituents. So we are seeing some, you know, a lot of the same players up there at the top three positions. There are sheriff, probation, and then D A in the fourth position. We are seeing, you'll see there, the general fund contribution to other funds there, also in that top four position. So that's something that always hasn't been the case, but we are seeing that now be the case over the last couple of years. And that is primarily driven by increased general fund contributions that are given to the fire fund because the fire fund is now anticipated at the end of this fiscal year, fire fund to be zero. So, and their current revenue, similar to our general fund revenue equation, their current year revenue is not sufficient to support their current year operations. So we need to infuse general fund dollars just to keep the scope of those services whole. So as that number continues to rise, that general fund contribution to other fund category there will continue to hover in that top three, top four section. Again, another public safety department, again, continuing to signal your board's priority for public safety in our communities here. Next slide, please. Here, I'm going to outline some of the impacts that are realized in the recommended budget before your board this morning. So in our sheriff's department, we're seeing a reduction in revenue with our contract with the courts. So with the services that we provide to the courts as far as the bailiff services there, the revenue that we're seeing come back from the courts, that's no longer keeping up with the services provided. In addition to that, we are seeing increases in the overtime that has been compounded by the increases in the wages given in the Coffin and Associates study, as well as a reduction in revenue in animal services as the city of Lemoore has recently made the decision to move away from the county to provide that service and actually contract with the city of Avonel for that service. So we are seeing a little bit of a reduction in revenue on that side. As I mentioned earlier, just seeing an increase in the general liability claims on our insurance side here at the county, which is a general fund impact to us. And then in the Human Services Agency, due to the nineteen ninety one realignment revenue stream not meeting base due to a lot of the economic factors, you know, it's all driven by sales, sales taxes, vehicle license fees as that is impacted by, you know, local economies. And if that doesn't meet certain metrics, then we no longer get growth revenue for that. And that is one of those funding mechanisms that helps to support the required local matches for the entitlement program. So the vast majority of the services and operations within the Human Services Agency are funded with state and federal dollars. However, on the entitlement side, there are mandated local requirements, and the percentages fluctuate depending on the, the type of benefit. But there are local requirements that jurisdictions need to fund locally. And so they do that by way of realignment revenue and any general fund revenue available after that. So as the realignment revenue doesn't keep up with the growth in those entitlement programs, again, that's a, that's a larger draw on the general fund. On the district, yes, sir.
So going back up and I, I see the sheriff's back here, too. So the court contracts that, I mean, is, is there a number on how much we're subsidizing for?
This year, unreimbursed costs was about approximately half a million dollars.
Correct.
And then is that on our platform? Is that like a, a higher level of care on our platform? Because quite frankly, I mean, if the courts don't want to pay for services, they can go find their own security personnel and, or, or have none. I, I just, I don't know why, why we, we're not doing it with Avonel anymore with the fire department. I don't know why we're going to do it with the court.
So I will defer to the sheriff, but yes, that's why we wanted to call it out because it's the first time ever that it is half a million dollars to our, our general fund, direct impact.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. You have a great point. It has been on our platform for the county for years. It's been on the state sheriff platform for probably decades. Each and every year, the state funds the courts and then they shortcut all the counties. This is true throughout every county in the state of California where you provide court security services for the courts. They consistently do not increase the funding in that fund to cover the net county cost. The challenge that we see is we recently met with our county council over the last six months to discuss specifically this issue. And unfortunately, judges support judges. And there's been recent court rulings where judges have said, sorry, counties, you guys are going to have to pay it because we're not going to short the courts. And so until we get a judge that overturns that, the county's on the hook. Now, just to give you an update, I spoke with Cassie, my fiscal analyst, about two weeks ago on this. And I believe the five hundred thousand, we're going to be able to get that down to about a hundred thousand at the end of this fiscal year. So I think we're going to be closer there. So we might see about a four hundred thousand dollar realization back to the county budget on that. But those were the projections we had at the time that all of this was prepared. So we're, we're working on it. And one of the things that we do is we move personnel in and out of the courtroom. So what happens is you have deputies that have been here twenty years and they're our most expensive deputies. Sometimes we replace them in the courts with our least expensive deputies where you do lose out a little bit on that training and experience, but it does save the budget sometimes. So we've been moving people in and out of our court budget personnel-wise because we do see some savings there to try to keep this within a reasonable amount of loss. And it's frustrating to say the least. So, but it's a great point. And I, I strongly encourage this board to continually, every year, fight back to the state of California on the court security budget because we should be sending a letter every year to the governor and the executive office of the courts and to the judicial council, encouraging them to fully fund the services that we provide at the court. And I'll just add to this, years ago, in a meeting with the governor, they threatened that they were going to remove us and insert C H P to take over the courts. And we said, go for it. We'd love to see that. Because a deputy sheriff is about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year when you add in all the salary and benefits. A C H P officer is about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. So we told them, we'd be happy if you took over the courts. Take it. Similar conversation with the jails, you all know that the jails are a county expense, but they love to come in and tell us how to run the jails. And we've also told them at that same input that, take them, take the jail. We'll let you have the jail. You can run it through C D C R. Good luck. But once again, they come back and realize that they can't do it for the cost that we do it, and they can't do it for the level of services that we provide. And so it's frustrating and yeah, keep it on your radar because I'd love to, I'd love to see that change at some point in my lifetime. So thank you. I'll be back. I, I do have a couple more comments. Welcome back after Mastin.
I'll speed up the next handful of slides here. On the district's attorney side, again, due to the implementation of COF, some significant increases there in the salaries and benefits and still some reductions in a few of the grant revenues there. On the election side, this year, we're only going to have one election. So the, the nature of the revenue on the election in our election department is when we have general elections like we had with the presidential election in November, those are very lucrative for us. However, the years that we don't have those, the revenue to support, you know, the number of elections goes down. And so we are seeing a reduction in revenue there. And then on the Community Development Agency side, due to a either slowdown or a decrease in just overall development in the county, we are seeing a, a reduction in the applicable revenue streams for that as well. And then on the county council side, this is something that we will be seeing this upcoming fiscal year and the following fiscal year because we are kind of changing the way that the Human Services Agency pays or reimburses county council for their services. So historically, Human Services Agency has transferred revenue annually over to county council. However, this is something that's been on our radar for, you know, several years now or a few years. But now that we've got new leadership and things are starting to settle down, we're finally getting around to it where we're changing that structure to actually recoup those costs in our county cost applied charges method, which is our standard method of accounting where it's kind of a two-year look back. Again, to make sure that we know what the actuals are to then recoup those expenses. And there's a true-up accordingly, depending on if you've over or under collected. So there will be a significant hit to revenue in the county council this current year and next year as a result. Just wanted to call that out. And then on the minors advocacy side, just a, a reduction in the revenue there for those services. However, on the positive side, in our defense of the accused budget, we did restructure our resolution for how we do our billing and our fee schedule, which we, we actually anticipate that to actually save us money. So we are anticipating some cost reductions there. Next slide, please. I'll kind of go through these charts relatively quickly there. These are just some pie charts that outline visually for you the proportional share of our revenue and expenses. So in chart one, it's going to be our grand total expenses on our budget at five hundred and seventeen million. And again, in chart two, the total financing to support that of five hundred and seventeen million. Charts three and four are general fund expenditures and general fund financing sources at four hundred and four million each. And then I'll end with chart five, which is our discretionary expenses at seventy seven million. And then lastly, our position allocation. So next slide, please, Alex. So again, chart one, this is our overall budgeted expenditure. So this is general fund and all other funds as well, again, at five hundred and seventeen million. As you can see, the largest categories that we have is going to be public safety. the largest categories that we have is going to be public safety at a hundred and fifty million. There in the maroon off to the right. And then we have public assistance and more of that purplish area off to the left at a hundred and forty-one million. And then we have health there at the bottom there in the teal at eighty-five million, followed by general government, forty-four million, and all other at forty-two million. Next slide, please. And again, with those expenses, chart two here shows the financing sources that we have that support those various functions. So no surprise there. The largest source of our funding there is state and federal at two hundred and eighty-one million, followed by again, just to further highlight our importance of our fund balance there. Or excuse me, I'll back up to general taxes at seventy-eight million there, followed by our fund balance at seventy-two million. And then all other, you know, revenue at fifty-five point nine million. Next slide, please. So chart three is going to be all of our general fund expenditures by function. So we just went over the overall county budget. Now we're just going to focus on general funds. So this is general fund expenditures by function. So again, our largest function of our general fund expenditure is public safety at a hundred and twenty-six million there on the left-hand purple piece of the pie, followed by public assistance on the right-hand side and the more maroon there at a hundred and thirty-seven million. Again, followed by health there below in the yellow at eighty-five million. So those are our three primary functions of our general fund expenditures or our general fund uses by function. Next slide. Yes. Excuse me. Oh, sorry. My apologies. Yes, public assistance is first at a hundred and thirty-seven million. Public safety is second, one hundred and twenty-six million. My apologies. Yes, correct.
Is it correct that, that public assistant, that, that amount is batch?
There's a, a lot of that is funded with state and federal dollars. There is a share of that that is the local match requirement for the entitlement programs accordingly.
So is it all, is that a hundred and thirty-seven of general fund dollars in?
That's a hundred and thirty-seven million in general fund expenditures. Yes.
Goes into public assistance.
Correct. In the public assistance function in the county.
Okay.
Supervisor, what we could do is in our final budget hearings, we can also split out the category. So you could see what's in public assistance, what's in public safety, because it's the way it's designated in our budget. So I think it'd be a lot cleaner if we just showed you what's in each category.
Right. Because this, does the hundred and thirty-seven turn into something much larger than that? Because it's because there's federal and state dollars associated with it. I mean, because this looks like it's, this looks like it's a hundred and thirty-seven coming straight out of general fund into public assistance. And is that necessarily correct?
No. So that's, so you can look at it. If Alex, can, can you go to the next slide, please, on chart four, and I'll, I'll explain right here in a second. So moving on to chart four, this is the general fund financing sources. So this, these are all of the categories of financing that support chart three that we were just looking at, where you were asking about public assistance at a hundred and thirty-seven million. So here are state and federal dollars here, which is the, obviously, the, the lion's share of our general fund financing sources that go to support the general fund financing uses. Two hundred and forty-three million of that is provided to us by the state and federal government. So to your point supervisor, the the one point three seven million in public assistance, that's not a direct one hundred percent county share, a hundred and thirty-seven million off the top. A lot of that is funded with the two hundred and forty-three million that we see. However, as I noted earlier, there is a cost share within that hundred and thirty-seven million that we do realize locally that does come off top of the general fund.
Yeah, maybe breaking that out different would be.
Because I think I have the same question, but just in a different way. So if you go back to that one thirty-seven.
Go back to chart three, Alex, please. Thank you.
Would it be fair to label that a hundred and thirty-seven as discretionary or mandated?
You mean the public assistance side, the one thirty-seven?
Money that we spent, I know. I don't know if it's confusing because it's under general fund expenditures, but would you, would you label that as discretionary spending money or pretty much mandatory matching?
So
towards the federal money.
The, the vast majority of all of the expenditures here, as, as I'll get to in a couple of slides, is going to be non-discretionary. So and, and these aren't categories that, these are actual categories that are designated in the state controller's office with how counties have to categorize certain functions. And so certain functions live in these designated categories accordingly, but the, the majority of that public assistance is going to be. Yeah, you're very welcome. If you go to chart four there, Alex, one last time. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah. So here, I just to reiterate here, this is all of the general fund financing sources for a hundred and four million. Obviously, the vast majority of which comes from the state and federal government at two hundred and forty-three million. After that, we have our general taxes at sixty-four million, followed by fund balance of thirty-seven million. So again, we, we see the fund balance as one of our top funding sources here to fund all of our operations. Next slide, please, Alex. And then supervisor Valley, to your point, this slide here shows of all of our general fund expenses, one might think, well, hey, you've got a general fund budget of four hundred, you know, plus million dollars. You've got, you know, lots of things you can do with that. We have lots of requests for things. But this chart just goes to show that of that four hundred and four million dollars, three hundred and twenty-seven million or about eighty-one percent of that is already mandated. We have no discretion over. We have to use it for certain things. And of our overall general fund budget, only nineteen percent or about seventy-seven million, your board has discretion to kind of move allocations around accordingly to meet your board's priorities in the community. So with that, that little green Pac-Man section off to the right is broken down further there by department. So again, it's a visual representation proportionate to the discretionary funding of the seventy-seven million. So again, if you can remember that bar chart that we had a few slides ago, that showed a lot of the public safety departments as the highest users. This shows it in a similar fashion, just a different look. So we have sheriff at the top at twenty million. We have contingencies there at ten point six, followed by contributions to other funds at ten point five, and then DA probation following shortly thereafter. So again, signaling your board's priority for public safety by way of use of the discretionary general fund that we have. Next slide, please. And we've got three more slides to go. So thank you for being patient. I appreciate it. Here, just want to go over the recommended FTE or our county workforce that's in the recommended budget. So we started with one thousand seven hundred and nine point five one positions as of today. However, in our recommended budget, that is before your board this morning, we are recommending a reduction of fifteen staff to that. So in addition to that, we are recommending the unfunding of fifteen allocations. So those allocations for the actual FTE are still staying on the books, but the actual dollars associated with the salary and benefits of those positions are being unfunded and taken off the books accordingly. So with that, if you want to go to the next slide, Alex, please, I'll go over what's in recommended as far as these FTE changes. So in the finance department, we have a reduction of one FTE accounting assistant. In county council, we have kind of a larger reorganization going on over there. So we are seeing a reduction of eight FTE total. And that includes one county council, one assistant county council, three deputy county councils, one legal clerk, one secretary to the county council, and one supervising legal secretary. In our job training office, we are seeing a reduction of six staff comprised of one JTO manager, three employment and training techs, and two senior employment and training techs. And we have a reduction of a couple of staff on the child support side, one legal office supervisor and one child support assistant. And then the seventeen positions that I mentioned, we are unfunding. Those are all housed in our public health department. Next slide, please. Yes, sir.
Through the chair on the on these recommended staff reductions, none of this is surprising any department.
No, sir.
All the time you guys are spending.
Yes, super.
Correct.
We've, we've presented this presentation to department heads. And we've presented it. We've been talking to the employees, the departments about, about these reductions. And I do want to point that on county council, it's, there's still some staff staying in that department. So it's not just the, those positions. There is still positions that we're leaving in the, in the department. And that's primarily due to contracting out to a law firm instead of having in-house attorneys.
Next slide, please. So things to implement currently and looking ahead at next fiscal year. So in the current budget, we've implemented the, the initiative of no new positions. Again, as we're dealing with a lot of the fiscal constraints that we keep talking about, we've taken the position of no new positions in these, in this recommended budget. In addition to the county council reorganization that we just went over, with that, we're kind of going to be doing in this next fiscal year as, as we, you know, move on in the summer and the fall, is to kind of meet with departments and do a holistic review of their operations, their services, what is, what's mandatory, what's not mandatory, see what efficiencies we can realize, see what redundancies we can get rid of, and really prep them for reductions leading into the following fiscal year of twenty-six, twenty-seven. Because, you know, again, we're dealing with fiscal constraints now and we anticipate still reeling from those impacts in the following fiscal year. So we want to start those conversations early. So that way, again, there's no surprises with the departments and we can be prudent in our approach to, to make sure that we, you know, lessen the negative impacts as much as humanly possible. So with that, looking ahead to the next fiscal year of twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're going to need to implement some sort of funding mechanism for the Mid Kings River GSA. So again, as I mentioned earlier, with the county taking over control of that and subsequently the responsibility of its obligations, currently, there's no additional funding mechanism to keep that operational and keep the, you know, GSA implementation going forward. So there's going to need to be some sort of proposition eighteen or excuse me, proposition two eighteen passed in order to generate a funding mechanism. So that way the Mid Kings River GSA doesn't become a larger liability and draw on the overall county general fund to support implementation of the groundwater sustainability plan and any additional legislative initiatives that the state may have for us there on that front. In addition to that, looking ahead, something that we've never done at the county, looking at implementing a salary savings or a vacancy rate line item in the budget. So historically, you know, we've budgeted on the FTE side, we've budgeted for every single position, whether, whether it was vacant or not. And so what we've seen a lot of our counterparts do is they actually have a vacancy rate built into the budget because they have trends of historical amounts of vacancy rates that they know have happened in the past. And so they're projecting a somewhat of an anticipated savings. So again, that, that way they can have a more true picture of what's going to happen in the budget to best allocate resources to its most effective use, rather than having, for lack of a better term, dead weight sitting on the books, knowing that it's not going to be expended because you have a certain vacancy rate. So we will be exploring that in the coming fiscal year to get a more true picture of what we're dealing with. And then lastly, again, as we go through this holistic review with departments and prepping them for, you know, any future cuts accordingly, just any overall reorganizations programmatically, strategically, within the departments, within within the divisions accordingly. And so that's what we really want to drive home today with this recommended budget. Yes, we got to a recommended budget. We will get to a final budget here later this summer, but we will be engaging with departments frequently as we move forward in the coming months to review their operations, review efficiencies, identify redundancies, and prep for reductions in the future. So with that, next slide, please.
Folks is also to be conservative, but not go in there with a surgical knife, having employees fear that they're going to lose jobs.
Sure.
I get it. Let's, let's look at it that way, too.
Absolutely. Okay, lastly, just some final steps as to what we have on deck here for the coming weeks and months. So obviously, this morning, consideration to adopt the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six recommended budget. And so why we do that is because the current budget resolution only gives departments spending authority through this fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. So as of July one, departments have no spending authority granted by your board. So this is kind of a preliminary budget that allows them to continue continuity of operations starting July one into the new fiscal year. So with that, we'll then move throughout the summertime to continue to look at the actuals that come in from where we end the fiscal year and any any things that are finalized from the state and federal level that impact us. And as, as more of the known or as more of the unknowns become knowns, we can then make any appropriate adjustments necessary for the final budget accordingly, which then looking ahead at August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five on a Monday, we do anticipate being back before your board at ten AM for final budget hearings and consideration for temporary do pass across the final budget. And then again, being back before your board shortly thereafter in mid-September on the seventeenth to bring the final budget book and budget resolution for adoption. Because the state controller requires that the counties have their budget finalized and submitted to them by October second of the calendar year. So with that, that concludes my presentation. And the recommendation before your board this morning is to excuse me, consider adopting the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six recommended budget as presented and schedule final budget hearings to commence Monday, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five in the board chambers at ten AM. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions?
Matt, how do we look out on health insurance costs?
So currently in the recommended budget, there's a, there was an anticipated ten percent increase. Because that's what we anticipated at the time. However, now that the health insurance committee has finalized the rates, we're actually going to see a three-point, roughly three point nine percent reduction. So when we come back before your board for the final budget hearings, what's going to be built into that budget is going to be, from what you currently have right now, a reduction of about thirteen point nine percent in health insurance costs.
Understood. Why did that occur?
I don't know. Did, Sarah, are you available online to speak to that?
I heard you for that answer. Speaking of healthcare, like, I mean, I don't see it painted out anywhere here, but there's, there's a balance in that account as well, correct?
In our internal service fund, it's, there's, it's, it's paid for out of that. And there is a balance there to cover unreimbursed costs that aren't fully realized by departments and revenue.
Then do we pull that figure out too in the, in the budgets? Is it a particular line item someplace that says that, that this is what the?
Not it's not as spelled out as far as like the general fund equation and the general fund balance of, hey, we're starting with this amount of money. We're going to end with this amount of money. The way that the state controller's office does their schedules in the budget, it treats and correct me if I'm wrong, Eric or Rob, I'm not sure why they do it, but they treat internal service funds a little differently as the, as far as the way they're reported. And so they're not reported in a similar manner. So.
Are there any other questions while we wait for Sarah? She's.
Well, yeah, I'm going to build on the, I think it's super awesome. The when you say reductions to the health insurance costs, you're saying that reductions to the employees' pocket?
It's a reduction to the county share of the health insurance costs there. It's anticipated to, to be. Yes.
Can you, can you hear me?
Still looking at cuts to
Correct. Yes, Sarah, we can hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure what the question is. Do you still need me to respond?
Sarah, yes, the question was, why have health insurance rates decreased for Kings County specifically when the state's? Health insurances have gone up? If you can have an explanation for that, please.
Uh, yeah, if you could give me just a moment, I'm going to go to the narrative from when it was presented, but I believe that it's because of the. The amount of high claims that we actually had reimbursed. So whilst we had high utilization of the health insurance, because some of those claims went went so high, we got reimbursements from the stop loss, which went directly back into our budget for the health insurance.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Then I guess just one last question, and maybe it's maybe it's a state thing. And we're talking, when you're talking about the fund balance. Like, like, can you put, I mean, because I know I see where your concern is, right? Not. I I equate it, no offense to departments, I don't mean it in the sense, but to me, I equate it like giving your kid a hundred dollars and say, I need you to bring eighty back. And then you hope and cross your fingers that they bring it all back versus just giving them twenty dollars. And so like, is there a way to put in like a mid-year trigger on, you know, with that fund balance, hold it back, put it in reserves so you can account for it? And then and then and then it also forces the departments to kind of get their act together a little better than it sounds like. You guys have been struggling in admin, trying to get these numbers back from from department heads. And just a kind of a note to department heads that like this is a priority. Your office needs these numbers in order to project, you know, mid-year numbers, because it's kind of like we're out in the middle ocean without, you know, direction. And so their participation in this cooperation is extensive. So I just wondered, like, is that? Can that even be done to put a trigger and say, okay, January first board meets, we release the rest of the the fund balance into these. Positions when you have a better idea of what it looks like versus versus, you know, everybody going down with the ship.
So we do do mid-years estimates from the departments in around December timeframe, and we always just review those internally. But at that time, those estimates are far and so overestimated, it's really hard to make those projections. And so like you indicated that it's something that we're communicating with the department heads, like how important these mid-year estimates are at the time when we request them. And so what we can do and we haven't done historically, but you know, I do know other jurisdictions do, they bring mid-year updates to the board. And so sometime in December or January, we can bring and show you where those projections are are at. You know, I think that would also help with the departments knowing that, hey, your estimates are are being presented to the board, you know. So those those are things that we can implement here internally. Again, we've never brought mid-year estimates to your board, because essentially. The departments bring action items with the forfeits budget change. And so that's kind of another way to add things into the budget that then change kind of your fund balance. So it is taking these things into account. We're exploring them to make sure, especially going into these these light years on some strategies into. Staying on top of our estimates.
Well, it's light years and and going into negotiations. I mean, I, you know, there's two contracts that that expire in July. And I mean, it's imperative that our department heads. Kind of not that they don't have their act together, but to get their act together and to force this down through their personnel. So so we have the opportunity as a board to either, you know, to take care of our employees. I mean, that's that's how this process works. And without their cooperation, we're kind of left high and dry without without a number to kind of balance off. And I just I throw that out to to anyone's listening.
Oh, you get the.
Really? Just come, thank you.
And.
My pleasure.
Thanks for being thorough with the presentation.
My pleasure. All good. Thank you.
I know a couple of months ago I brought up, it was just a board member announcement. At the time, because I don't feel that we have the jurisdiction with there being a health, an employee health committee. That looks at what to add to our health plan and for what to remove and. What's what we can afford and what we can't. But maybe during this time of the budget and the overall budget, is it possible prior to? Budget day in September that the board can see some numbers on or any kind of data analysis. On if we added. Some of the benefits of civil glutide. To our eligible benefits on our health insurance plans. Because as I spoke to earlier with the with what we're learning about some glutide, which obviously we talk about Ozempic and the different. Medications that came out to deal with diabetes, we now we now know that there's benefits to weight loss, right? And so is some of our employees, including myself, if you go and get diagnosed, whether with sleep apnea, obesity. Anything outside of diabetes and your doctors prescribe you some of these civil glutide medications. And you go to the pharmacist, you turn it in, you find out that you get rejected because even though the doctor says this is what would benefit you. Our employee health plans don't cover that. And so I know there's some increases to that cost, but I would love to see numbers going into the final budget. On if there's a balance between that where, okay, it might cost more upfront. But in the long term, when you have employees who are losing weight, not getting diabetes in the first place, not having heart attacks, not having strokes due to. Weight or or having any other kind of ailments due to sleep apnea issues. I'd like to see what the balance on that is. And again, earlier when I spoke on it, I felt it was out of my jurisdiction. But maybe under the perspective of the overall county budget, I'd like I'd like to ask, see if we could see that.
Just for clarification supervisor, was that wanting to see that in when we do final budget hearings in late August? Or when we present the final book and resolution for adoption in mid-September?
I don't want to rush you, but I'd like to see it before we finalize the county budget. Room for that, because when I honestly, when I spoke on that, just under a board member announcement, I got a lot of positive feedback from some county employees on. On that, those those comments and officials to home on it, boy, they've already experienced that as well. For full transparency, I've experienced it too, but I'm not lobbying for myself. I'm lobbying for for the employees as well on that. Okay, and then moving on. The staff reductions, I know some of those numbers are real bodies, but is the majority of those just unfunded line vacancies?
I can answer that.
For this one, for this year.
So leaning into the last into the year, we we were really clear with our departments that, you know, because we were implementing COF associate, you know, we we needed to look at some strategies. And so some departments were forthcoming and they were the ones who actually recommended these positions to be not filled. They were the ones who said, hey, I think I could do without these. So these, except for the county council, the other rest were all given up by the department.
Good. That's that's good work going about that. That way, I just wanted to clarify that for the public too on there, so we're not looking too harsh. Now, also, I saw going into this year and next year, one of the thought processes is no new positions. Does that include sheriff and fire?
Yes.
Which goes into my down this road right here of thinking that, okay, so when you're talking about. Limited services from public safety, whether it be sheriff, fire or staff reductions that are going to impact the public. Are you just looking fiscally or do you have any any data? That provides any insight on your part on how Kings County taxpayers feel? Meaning would Kings County taxpayers prefer higher taxes and more services or lower taxes and less services? Because I think that's easier for you guys to do at the fiscal level and just crunching numbers. But the board of supervisors were responsible, the people of Kings County, and I would want to know what that thought process is from them. When we start having to make those decisions on providing less public safety and less services to the county. So can you answer that? Do you have any insight on how our county taxpayers feel about that?
There's there's not a survey or a poll that we do to the taxpayers to. Get their opinions as to what the recommended budget is and how they feel about it.
Do you think we could do that?
If your board would like to do something like that, if your board direct staff to to do something like that.
Is that is that very costly? Because I think if we're going to start having that conversation. The elected part of this whole puzzle that we should be aware and mindful of that. Because on the flip side is, if we have no choice but to provide less fire, less sheriff deputies, less services to the county. Then we could be more comfortable in talking about, don't anyone get scared, but go on to the voters on a sales tax revenue to be able to afford that. And that would be awesome for the next election, because Super Ben would be on the ballot and you talk about it. But, yeah, I'm not trying to be funny, I know. But I think that's a real conversation that we might need to look at when you're talking about right possible. Look at the federal policy, right, where the state's bracing for the hits. And if they take the hit, that's going to trickle down to us and we might get get some kind of surprise hit. As as hard as you guys are working to avoid that and being as strategic as you are. But we might be living in a different world in six months, depending on what happens in the federal legislature and the state legislature. Is that something you think you might want to look in or maybe get just a presentation on some costs? So we can hear about that, so we can.
I say get through this budget hearing and get through to September twenty sixth and see what our our department has can do. Get faith in them. We hired them. We they have a job to do, so if they can make cuts, but don't lay off people or don't take salary. And then we'll see what happens.
You got something.
And also, I'm gonna say my glutide deal, food vendor trucks are out here today at eleven thirty.
I guess you better not catch me out there since I've never run him on that. I was looking at the, let's see, can can use wine barbecue, they got many plates.
Oh, yeah, that diet.
In short, just as a recap, just to point out the obvious, though, I think we even need to be even more critical now on discretionary expenses. This board's been fairly critical with with expenses, but I think we even need to be more critical now. All the indicators are showing the economy's not picking up very well. I think we need to batten down the hatches a little bit, but it is a B fifty two and we can land it slowly, which is which is why we're trimming fewer the positions, just to trim. So, thank you.
Yes, going back to that, my last two points are, one, I believe we have, we had some new news from our federal lobbyists on. Some possible monies coming in, but I want to stress to the federal lobbyists and our state lobbyists. That as they see us having these difficulties here, and I hope they're online. And maybe they can even comment that they're going to work for us to help bring in some funding. Because even though you hear about this deficit at the state level, just being on and reading right now, because our monitors are down, back to the iPhone for research. In the May revise, the current the current budget, you have LA and San Francisco. They're they're going to get they're going to get a one point seven five billion dollar loan from the state to deal with their their own. Their own budget crunches and for the level of transportation. So when we sit here and we're happy because a senator or assembly member rose out of two million dollar check, wow, we need bigger numbers than that. And I think we're afraid to ask for that. I'm not, but I think that we need to give our lobbyists at the federal state level a more aggressive message that we expect them to deliver something. Because everyone else is getting a piece of the pie. Deficit or not, and we're going to need that help. Lastly, I want to thank our CEO Martinez, all of our staff, all the department heads, employees who added to this. And to, I think everyone's trying to get to the right spot and Kiri, I think you're there. With a proposed budget that strikes the right balance between fiscal responsibilities and upholding Kings County values. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Do you have any questions from the audience? This time I'll bring it back to the board. We need to schedule a budget hearing conference for Monday, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five at ten AM. It's a board pleasure.
Move that one by chair.
By the second vice right there. I don't forget, call the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm.
Do that. We got the sheriff. Good morning, Sheriff.
He asked a question, comments. I don't actually have any questions of you, but I do have a comment if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. Just to just to add to the conversation, which I think has been one of the best conversations that I've seen in my fifteen years. It's a it's a little bittersweet moment for me because I look at the slide that Alex showed earlier where the first budget was two thousand and ten, eleven, which was my first year. And to the last slide, which is my last year, so.
You going somewhere?
I am. That's coming up on your next agenda item. Supervisors, there you make a great point. Let me caution a little bit on the mid-year budget requests that you kind of threw out there for department heads. Final budget is September, where we do the final, final approval of any changes and everything. And then three months later, you want a mid-year budget review where we're going to make adjustments. I have a fiscal manager and two accountants, probation has a fiscal manager, fire has a fiscal manager. We're the three biggest funded public safety agencies with very limited fiscal staff. To accomplish the tasks that you're requesting. So I would just caution that if we could slow that roll just a little bit, that would be greatly appreciated, because you probably sent Cassie's head spinning. There's a slide in there, I think the the slideshow is outstanding. There's a slide in there that says something to the effect of. Departments are historically inaccurate in their mid-year budget review. Matt, I forget which slide it is, but it's something to that effect. I dispute that a little bit. Because of my comment I just made, we literally go through final budget in September. And then in December, you're like, okay, that sixty five million dollars we gave you, where are you at with it? Yes, we're going to be historically inaccurate. So it's not fair to paint departments as historically inaccurate when, like, we're literally just scrambling with the amount of staff we have. But we also don't, you know, we come to the board and say, well, don't add any positions. I would love to have like five more fiscal people in my department for that sixty five million dollars that we spend. And and no discredit to other entities that get a lot of federal and state funding, but let's do some careful apple to apple comparisons. You know, because they get money from the state and feds, they have multiple staff members that are dealing with their budget. But because we're funded by the local tax revenues and state tax revenues and property tax revenues, we get very limited staffing to deal with the budget. So I just throw that on the board's radar because you got to be fair with us as well. Like, you can't say, well, we want you to do all these things, well, but we're not going to add any staffing to do those things. So that's that's one of my points. I've never seen in one year over one year, twenty million dollars given to employees for salary and benefits. And to me, that's a direct kudos to this board, our CEO. That's huge. And those fifteen slides, and I know it wasn't up there as an individual slide, but that's never happened. And and I think that's a great thing to see here in Kings County where where, and I'll just say finally, like. It was given to the employees. So what does that say to us? You brought up a great point supervisor. Well, what's our wish list, right? Well, all all departments have wish lists. I have a wish list. We scale those wish lists back because we see that number where we have to make some adjustments based on, okay, employees. And not all, I'll just say a large majority of employees did get nice raises and there was definitely benefit increases. Okay, well, then as department heads, we have to be realistic as well and go, okay, well, we better scale back that wish list. And we've done that, but we do have wish lists. Every one of us has a wish list that we added things and the CIA's office has to make decisions and go, hey, look, we're not going to fund those things because we just spent all this money. So that's one of my points that I just want to point out. Health contingency fund. We talk about reserves and I appreciate that Kings County has never built up to the seventeen percent reserves, because personally, as a taxpayer, that's ridiculous. That we're going to put seventy million dollars in an account just to sit there. I hope this board never does that. Health insurance has their own contingency fund. It's about ten million dollars. I started on the Health Insurance Committee twenty years ago. It's an amazing program for Kings County employees. But we shouldn't then also build up a health, a reserve to cover the health insurance fund that already has its own reserve to cover the payout. And and all that means is if we were to stop the self-insurance program, that ten million dollars is there to pay out to finalize the self-insurance program. Because we have those expenses and does that mean there's money left over? Yeah, there's going to be money left over because we're we're funding that so that way if something were to happen and we go with a a regular health insurance company. That there's money to cover that. So you don't need to create a reserve for that because there's already a reserve created for that. So that takes down that. That there's money to cover that, so you don't need to create a reserve for that because there's already a reserve created for that, so that takes down that, you know, seventeen percent reserve you need. It's a great program and, but we also shouldn't overfund it. Seventy thirty is about the number, so if you looked at that ten million dollars, the county supports that fund to about seventy percent. The employees support that fund to about thirty percent, so there is some discretion there for the board to consider. I'm not suggesting by any means we reduce it, but I also think that they should look at that from a perspective of how can we increase certain benefits. I suggested a couple of years ago that we should look at covering retirement for employees and. You know, I was kind of thrown out there, it's like, oh, he's just looking out for himself because he's a couple of years away from retiring, I don't need it. You could, you could carve me out, I do not need it. Um but it's a great benefit for employees, and so I do think that that's a great point and it should be looked at. The uh. Animal services, the mayor had to leave, uh Lamoore Mayor was here. So we we charge out to Lamoore and Hanford for animal services, shelter services, uh to the tune of Hanford's about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh Lamoore is about three hundred thousand dollars, Lamoore has opted out and chose to go to Avonel. I bring this point up because we were charging Lamoore about three hundred thousand dollars a year to provide shelter services to them. They're going to the city of Avonel to the tune of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So we obviously see that decrease in our budget, so it has to be either absorbed or we have to cut positions, the challenge is. We are, we're not at a staffing level where we had all these extra positions in animal services. But I put that on your radar because guess who just got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more into their budget? Um and are they increasing their staffing or are they using status quo? I just put that on your radar because there are other negotiations going on. Um that that are taking place where they are seeing a revenue increase in that area, and and I don't know what changes they're making.
I was just gonna say, so with that, Sheriff, like, so does the the shelter staff down there then, when when somebody comes in from the city of Lamoore? With the stray animal, do you just say, you know, hit the road, Avonel cutoff, right turn to Avonel? Um. Because at the same point in time, it's not fair back to county. To be subsidizing not one penny of a stray or a feral or anything else that comes in through that shelter that comes out of the city of Lamoore. If they're not getting a pony yet, dollars back into the county, that makes sense.
Yes, and you're correct, and so this has happened to us before with the city of Corcoran, um city Corcoran contracts with the city of Avonel, and that's exactly what we do. If we can verify that the animal that somebody's trying to bring in is from that jurisdiction, we turn them away. And we send them to where they have contracted for that jurisdiction. Under the laws of the state of California, each governing entity is responsible for certain animal services, especially when it comes to uh dogs, not necessarily cats, but dogs. And so what happens is, we we just refer them, and so now the citizens of Lamoore. If they do try to come into us, we're gonna refer them to go to the city of Avonel. And you know, that's the, that's the decision that their governing body had to make is if they were willing to put that on to, you know, their citizens to go to the city of Avonel, but that is the case, absolutely.
Sure, um so in fairness to your budgeting, as you pointed out, uh did Lamoore give you a heads up?
They did, and so um we, so in our contract, by April fifteenth of every year, we're supposed to give them what we believe the budget number will be for next year. Working with Matt especially, and I'll tell you, I'm gonna give Matt some praise here, if there's some things that this guy can do is he can put some numbers together. And and like, it's super impressive, and so we followed kind of the general pattern of the fire negotiations and submitted. Some changes to the city of Lamoore and the city of Hanford. And during that timeframe, the city of Lamoore decided that they were gonna look at other. Other areas that they wanted to to take those services now. Um I know that we're, I think we're still waiting here back from the city of Hanford, I'm not sure yet, but uh. And so we'll see, because at the end of the day, the city of Hanford could make a similar decision if they chose to do so. Yeah.
Fair, just a, just a comment back to the reserve account. So I have a different perspective because I'm a small business owner for over twenty five years. And I was successful in a business that where it has one of the lowest income per capita's outside of the restaurant business. And the way that you achieve that is through reserves, and that that money is not just shoved off to the side. It's that money is used, they put it in CDs, they put it in in interest-bearing accounts. For example, Armona Community Service District has done that, and they started with a fledgling program. And now they've built that up to quite something, and they use just the interest portion. To fund a lot of different things, like right now a solar project. So I'm not saying you have to get to the sixty something million dollars, but I think we have to be in much better state than we are right now.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, and my comments didn't mean to not have any, uh we're at about eleven million dollars. Um I do think that if we get to that twenty million dollar range, we're in a pretty good position. Um I just don't think it needs to be sixty six, I think that there's a lot of services that we could provide. Without putting sixty six million dollars away, but that those, but I I appreciate your comment, and I do agree with that. Um. You know, we're no different here at the county, um we add things, we add workload to our staff, and a lot of times we don't fund that. And I'll just give a recent example, because as this board moves forward, you have to start thinking in terms of. We did try to add back a few deputy sheriff positions this year, your board has been gracious enough to help. Uh these school districts add uh school resource officers, but what we did when we added those school resource officers, we didn't actually add a position in the budget. Unless it came through the cops grant, the ones that came outside of the cops grant, we just took from our patrol staffing and added those. Positions to the school, which then depleted our patrol staffing, so we were trying to add back a couple of deputy sheriffs this year. And recently, your board rightfully passed the no camping ordinance, and going forward at some point. I I would strongly encourage this board to fund a couple of deputy sheriff positions to do the enforcement side of that, because. You guys get calls on that, I get calls on that. But we're drawing from our patrol resources to go out and. Try to handle those things, which works at times, but other times, you know, they're busy working on other things, and I do think going forward. That should be something strongly that your board considers. Is specifically funding a couple deputy sheriff positions to make sure that we can do that focused enforcement. On those homeless encampments, I'm not asking for that, I just wanted you to have that, you know, in the back of your brain, like, oh, yeah, we did do that, and like, okay, what do we do to? Make sure we have the positions to do something about it, and so I just put that on your um on your radar. Um I got, I had a couple more notes here, so if you'll just bear with me for a second. Um. I do have, hopefully for final budget, and I kind of want to get your feel on this, I'm not asking for any additional positions for the final budget, but there are a couple of. Position changes that I would like to accomplish. We started, and it's two areas that your board has been directly involved in the last six months. Um one area is obviously our our uh air support unit program. When we started that unit, we simply just took positions from patrol and said, okay, well, you're now working in the airplane unit or the helicopter unit now, of course. Um I would like to actually make those positions permanent, so it would be an addition. Of two positions, but a deletion of two positions, so it would be a wash, but we would actually make those permanent positions, we would have a permanent pilot. And a permanent tactical flight officer, currently those two positions are a sergeant and a senior deputy. And so it's really just position title changes, but I do think that we've reached a point. Um in that program that it's beneficial to the county as a whole. Um for for those of us that are on social media and you follow Hughes News and the other platforms. One of the biggest things you see almost every time there's a critical incident in Kings County is one is people are asking, is air support up? Or air support is up, that's one of the fir- very first posts that you'll see that people are responding. Is it the airplane's up or the airplane's not up, and is somebody calling for the airplane or now the helicopter? And I would like to bring that back for final budget as an addition and deletion. If your board supports that, and then I have one additional request. Um which would be a slight increase in the budget, but it would be a very minimal increase. In our major crimes task force, we have one, what started as a records clerk position, processing paperwork. But that position has evolved into an investigative assistant position where that clerk is now doing legal paperwork, helping prepare. Um gang enhancement reports and putting together data for court. Which is above and beyond typically what we saw in kind of our records clerk position that is just simply. I shouldn't say simply, but more so processing the paperwork side of things. This person is actually putting work into investigation, doing social media work, I would like in the final budget to bring back. Um the deletion of that position, but the addition of an investigative assistant position. Which, if you'll recall, is the same position that we have in our coroner's office, so our. Our person in our coroner's office who started generally as the clerk is now an investigative assistant, and and those are similar in capacity, and so. For final budget, that would be my request to work with county administration to bring those three uh back and and. I'm not asking for approval or denial at this point, I'm just saying that I'd like to have them on the radar when we come back in September or August, actually, and then September.
Very good, one question.
Yeah, Sheriff, just going back to your helicopter and the plane. Um are the cities calling you, like Corcoran PD, LPD requesting that support? And if so, do you turn around and bill them later?
So the cities do call and no, we don't, um I would like to see that occur in the future. You know, and and if budgets become more robust, obviously that would be awesome, I also think that, you know.
I've seen that you did, because that's business, right?
Well, it is, but it's it's kind of like FIRE and the mutual aid side of things, you know, FIRE helps other jurisdictions out. And vice versa, other jurisdictions help us now. In in the bigger scheme of thing, we're the biggest agency in the county when it comes to frontline public safety on the streets. And um so we don't reach out to other agencies to help us much because we have all the resources that we need typically. Um and and so, but the smaller agencies, we do help provide that service because, you know, we're their, we're their first line of backup. And so we do do that and we don't send them a bill, it's something that could be done, um. And uh but we have not done that yet, you know. Ten years seems like a long time, but it's also a short amount of time, we're still kind of in the infancy of this thing. And and so I do think that that is something that could be done in the future, you know. If budgets allow it, and some of the obviously city agencies have recently passed sales tax measures, so so they may may be in a better position down the road. To help fund that because they do get a great benefit from it.
But there is some law that you have to back them up, no matter what, correct?
Well, we have mutual aid, um we have mutual aid rules that we follow in the state of California, and it's Supervisor Robinson texted and asked me this a couple of weeks ago. When big things happen, we help each other out, that's just the reality that we live in, and there is a Lima Fund, Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Fund in the state of California that has twenty five million dollars in it. But it's very criteria specific, it has to be a local emergency, a state emergency, a national emergency, et cetera, et cetera, to get into that money. And so for most of the local stuff that we're doing, it's just, you know, jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Where if we're available, we true do try to help, but if not, we can, we can tell them no based on our own resources as well.
Very good, well, yeah, or maybe, like you said, ten years worth of data, you can look at some of the call. Data, and even if it's percentage, maybe ask some councils to build in a little gas money in their annual budgets, you know?
I think it'd be a good study session for a lap.
Ten grand, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know how much fuel costs, that might even be a ridiculously low number. Ten to no.
I wish I could say yes to that, but no, it's not. So I I I totally agree, um but it's like we saw with the animal services contract, you know, cities are also looking for areas where they can pinch a penny. Um and and I don't blame them, they have decisions to make as well, but I do think your 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 point. Is well taken, and I do think that it it is something that should be on the radar to look at in the future for a shared cost. Yeah.
Hey.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, Madam, please call the role.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboom?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert Thayer?
Item passes five zero, uh we'll move on now to the next item, which is gonna be a public hearing at ten AM, it is eleven oh five. And so we have Department of Finance.
Morning Chairman, members of the board, Rob Knutson, Assistant Finance Director with the Kings County Department of Finance. Uh here before you this morning, presenting um an introduction to an ordinance establishing the jail booking fee rate for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. Uh each year, Government Code Section two nine five five zero requires us to calculate and set this rate uh based on prior year amounts. The fee calculated for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six is two hundred and four dollars per booking. Uh this is an increase of nineteen dollars from the previous year's charge of a hundred and eighty five dollars. Uh the change is mainly due to increasing uh employee salaries and benefits, as well as increased utilities and information technology costs. Uh historically, we would charge this rate to the cities based on the number of bookings they brought to our jail. Uh the state did take this authority away from us in two thousand and eleven, and instead um. Dedicated a statutory annual allocation of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um we have received this amount every every year since. Uh also, the passage of A B eighteen sixty nine uh eliminated our authority to add this charge to a convicted defendant's fees and fines. So even though we're currently not able to use this rate, we we still must calculate it and formalize it each year in an ordinance. Uh if the state for some reason eliminates our funding, we would be allowed to. Charge half of this rate to the cities for bookings they bring into the prison or the jail. Uh so with that, I'm asking you to consider approving the introduction of this ordinance, uh establishing the county jail booking fee rate for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, and waive the reading.
Hey, thank you very much, if we have any questions from board? Any question in the audience? This time we'll open up the public hearing.
I have no written correspondence and no one has filled out a speaker card.
Anybody, I didn't have a comment, came for this item? This time we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for direction. Move by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Valley, Madam, please call the role.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboom?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on now to Board Member Nautus to report, so we'll start with Supervisor Nevs.
Morning, Mr. Chair, thank you, uh my, I want to begin by thanking Bobby Wartson of the uh Commission on Aging, as well as the uh in-home supportive services for hosting the World Elder Abuse Awareness Breakfast uh in Lamoore. Um. But that was last Friday, special thanks to my wife Kathy, Jim Kilner, uh. Greg Martella, Richard Kabundis, and Luki Villia, that helped prepare the pancakes and sausage breakfast. Uh Luki, you know, in the old days would bring in a um, you know, a nice gesture of adult beverages. Uh for this event, he brought insurance, so I'm not sure what that he was trying to say. But uh we'll work on that uh a little bit uh in the future. Also want to thank the Kings County Parks for assisting the seniors as well as the transportation across the street and. And all of the information and resource booths that were there to uh help seniors. Gain some uh information and knowledge. Also, on the Friday evening, the Rockin' the Downtown Lamoore Event was held. Um live music, food vendors, adult beverages, Elaine, Elena and B Street was blocked off. Uh very well attended, um very, very nice event. On Sunday, attended um granddaughter's graduation from Cal Poly. Um it, she received her undergraduate degree in ag communications and will plans on uh pursuing her graduate degree at Texas Tech in in August. And then uh yesterday, the Kings County Homeless Corp collaborative uh held this June meeting. Uh rosters and memberships uh are up for reappointment, uh the clerk is already where, will be coming to us uh next week. The annual report, as well as housing projects, uh were discussed. Um report from submit uh subcommittees. Um on public information and on the website, and homelessness continues to be an issue. Um also, uh the uh street outreach, uh the shower unit is still going through. With kind of shakedowns and will be uh available soon. Uh they continue to use it and they learned to use so, set them, set the trailer up. And uh take those services to the. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you Supervisor Nevs, Supervisor Thayer.
Yeah, thank you, um happy Father's Day. My colleagues up here on the on the dais and and all the other dads out there, um. Um really a a quiet week for me, can't talk much about it because I visited a town that what happens if stays there, so. Can't bring any of that back, but I didn't lose any money, so I didn't put any money in anything that. Didn't want to give it back to me, so with that, that's all I have to say. Supervisor Valley?
Things Chair, quickly, Corcoran City Council on Tuesday evening. Uh Avonel City Council on Thursday evening, thank you for being there again. C A O Martinez again. Uh Armona on Friday as well, um I didn't get there early enough to enjoy the breakfast, I saw the plates, they looked good though. And I was hungry, but I did get there to see uh Jeremy Elvis Pierce. Get down, it was fun to watch the seniors. Uh a lot of them were dancing too, they got more energy than me. And uh but they were dancing all the old hits, and it was good to see Jeremy go deep on catalog, listen, get out of this music, that was fun. Um the uh the only other thing that I would say is um for next Tuesday, Madam C A O. If there's anything uh critical, could you put it at the top of the agenda, it's a. Uh funeral services in Corcoran at ten AM for one of our county employees' fathers. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna double back to it, so anything critical, let's go right at night, and I'm I'm gonna punch out of here about nine thirty. Um. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let's see, last Wednesday, attended Armona Community Services District meeting. They adopted their new budget. And they also elected uh, past Supervisor Doyle Davis. Uh, as a new board member, they have one vacancy. Uh, on Thursday, attended the award ceremony for Sunset. Rubbery over at the Episcopal Church. Uh, they received an award amongst the smaller groups in their region. There's one of the uh, best uh, well, excellence in service award, I think is how they characterized it. So congratulations to them. Also attended some of the run, because it's Armona School District meeting. Uh, to uh, to get volunteers and continue the dialogue about the park with Armona and Armona Community Services about the park. Uh, Friday, attended the World Elder Abuse Event with uh. With Supervisors. Uh, thank you Supervisor Nevs for cooking. Uh, Lupe Villa and I Supervisor Verboon, I saw.
I ate.
Yeah, I saw that. I saw that. I cleaned your plate.
You gotta have consumers.
So good.
It's the category.
You know, on that note, uh, I talked to uh, to uh, one of the seniors. And she just volunteered, but I didn't ask. She says, well, you know who my favorite supervisor is? I said, no, I don't. She says, what Supervisor Nevs? And I said, why is that? She says, because he cooks for us every year. So thank you to that. Uh, good job to Bobby Wardson and staff for a strong senior turnout. Thanks to DA Hacker and Nate Farrier for an effective skit on senior scamming. Uh, it was honestly a pleasure to serve the seniors. One of the things, uh, Saturday had the pleasure of speaking at the Juneteenth Celebration. Supervisor Verboon at the Longfeld Center with uh, Mayor Martinez. You should have. I was waiting for you. Uh, thanks to Paula Massey. My family had a great day. My friend, my uh, son ran into his friends. So we ended up making a day of it. Too many snow cones, actually some basketball, video games. And I'd encourage everyone to visit the Longfeld Center as it is, uh, it's a phenomenal place for kids. I think it's underutilized. Uh, also they have a weight gym. And uh, so it was just, it was refreshing to see and thank you Mayor Martinez for giving me the tour. And then uh, yesterday wrote a letter of support for Main Street Hanford. They're putting in an application to be one of uh, one of America's best Main Street programs. So I wish them luck.
Thank you. Kiri Martinez, staff update and reports.
Mr. Chairman, you don't have a report? Okay.
I don't know what I did.
The board received. The board received invitation from Kings County Health Department on the fiftieth anniversary for a week, which will. Take place next Thursday, June twenty sixth at eleven thirty at the Hanford Office. Kings County Behavioral Health will host its family member support group tonight. Tuesday, June seventeenth from five thirty to seven thirty here on campus. Kings County Behavioral Health. Will host its veterans support group next Tuesday, June twenty fourth from five thirty, seven thirty at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Hanford. The Kings County Library will continue its twenty twenty five summer reading next week with an. Audio production for teens event that will take place at the Corcoran Branch on Monday, June twenty third at one PM. The event will continue on June twenty fourth at the Avonale Branch at eleven AM and the Kid, well, in the city branch at two thirty. The event will continue on June twenty fifth at eleven at Lemoore Branch and at two thirty at Stratford Branch. The event will wrap up on Thursday, June twenty sixth at ten AM at the Hanford Branch and then one. PM at Armona Branch. For all this information, you can also access their website, which has all the listings and times. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for June twenty fourth. We have a long agenda. It is the last one for the fiscal year, so everyone is getting their contracts. So just bear with us. We will, we'll be utilizing the consent calendar. Uh, to our advantage that day. Administration has six items. Um, a board meeting cancellation schedule, a California jobs first service agreement. A recognition for the employee um, recognition committee for the volunteers of the barbecue success of workers comp. Compensation, third party administrative six amendment, claims for damages. Um, a resolution to approve financing acquisition for the construction of a senior living rental through rental community project for Cal PFA. Ag has three agree, three agreements um, to do with the food and agricultural first certified farmers market inspection and cooperative agreement for the nursery. Inspection program. Behavioral Health has ten items. Mental Health Services Act annual update. And um, agreements. The rest are just agreements for uh, behavioral health services. Child Support has two items for a cooperation agreement with the Superior Court and Amendment on a Team Legal Incorporated. Finance has two items. The second item, it, one is appropriation limits for fiscal year. This is the item that we talk about that finance cleans up the budget by every fiscal year because we cannot have a unbalanced budget. And establish a booking fee. So if you had your first reading today, a second reading won't be next week. And Health has three items amendments with Tate Environmental Services and a rollover for some grant funding. And proclaiming June twenty twenty five for Brain Awareness Month in Kings County. Agency has four items. Some MOUs with the DA's office, an agreement with King United Way for mobile application maintenance services, agreement with Fresno State. Fresno Foundation on Safety Organized Practice Training and an MOU with Kings County Behavioral Health. Public Works has an item on the fire station for um, access driveway and probation has four items. On some agreements with Superior Courts and some champion recovery and agreement with Kings View. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll add what I did a little bit last week. So I don't, I left here uh, to go to Avonale. Left here at three o'clock, got home at nine o'clock. Uh, went there, they had a little, little demonstration outside, talked to the residents. Uh, we got inside, got our seats. And. Sat down about quarter to four, eight o'clock, start at four o'clock. Seven something, they came out of closed session. The community asked to have the item for the fire up on the, up on the agenda. The city manager and the county council uh, disagreed and argued with the community. Uh, there was no outreach, no respect from the city manager to the city. Uh, C A O, County C A O. Uh, kind of no eye contact, no nothing, very disrespectful. Uh. City manager had an item for himself on the agenda where he got to talk about himself. We did that for like an hour. And then they had the item that came up for the fire and they tabled it. And they knew they were gonna table it. They knew they weren't gonna vote on it and they made the entire community sit there for four hours. And I think that's very disrespectful. This is why I called for a uh. Study session on it so that we can all find out exactly where we're at. I think we're responding to issues that aren't presented to us. We've only received one letter, which was they're gonna pull out of the fire and then a letter that we got yesterday saying they rescinded that letter. So. Uh, there's more facts that need to be uh, talked about. And that's why we have a new board member and we have a new fire chief. And I think it'd be very important to do that at that time. Uh, but I just felt that uh, you know, the city council had sat there and a meeting was ran by the attorney and a manager and uh. Very poor run and very bad for the community. I felt bad for the residents. I sat there. I was a little upset. I told them, and they said they were still negotiating. We haven't even negotiated. They had done nothing on their end. To protect the citizens of their community. So the only thing we've done is gone out and our, our staff has gone out to make sure they had everything they need. And give them multiple options so what they can reduce their rate and they chose not to. And so uh, I think there was a probably gonna be a recall. I think there was four recall notices pulled yesterday for the city council. So uh, I don't think the problem, well, the city council needs to know that they're in charge and not let the attorney run the show. And so uh. That's what I did on, on Thursday evening.
And Mr. Chair, just real quick, Kiri is um. Or maybe Joe, I think you know, the fair, does that start Thursday?
Yes.
Did we say that?
Fair starts Thursday.
I do not have those details.
Okay.
The big Kings Fair starts Thursday, Sunday.
Yeah, so the fair starts Thursday. And then just one more thing, if anybody uh, is interested, it's at six PM tonight at the Hall. There's a high speed rail and community meeting.
Tonight or last night?
It's tonight.
Right.
At six thirty.
Is it six thirty?
Thought it was.
I should, mine shows six, but.
Okay, six.
I'm, I'm responsible for my own calendar, so I'm not gonna uh, say that it's correct. Sixish, this is it.
Oh, doors open. And at the fair, the dairy and poultry is not gonna be there. It's just going to be the pork beef and and. Everything else, they have a new uh. Carnival right? So it'll be interesting to see how they're all placing.
It'll take time to build a fair, I guess. I guess Sunday, Saturday night destruction derby, so.
Saturday.
Yeah, get to watch people tear things up.
Did we get a passes, parking passes?
We have not got nothing yet.
Uh. Free to enter, but you have to pay part. So I'm not sure. It, entry into the fair is free, but you do have to pay part.
Okay. Sorry about that. Uh, we'll go on now to board member now, oh, I'm sorry. Closed session item as outlined by council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation. Hmm, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section five four nine five six point nine of the Government Code one case threat of litigation regarding. Kings County Juvenile Center. Next item, Government Code Section five four nine five seven, Public Employee Appointment slash Employment Title Sheriff. Next item, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. Name of case Alexandria Smith, V County of Kings at Al. Kings County Superior Court Case Number twenty three C zero zero three seven. Last item, Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Agency Designated Representatives, Kiriya Martinez, Karen Lee, Shay Johnson of Leeburg Cassidy Whitmore. Employee Organizations, General Unit, Clocia, Supervisor Unit, Clocia's, Blue Collar, S C I U. Detention Deputies Association, Firefighters Association, Deputy Sheriffs Association, Probation Officers Association. Prosecutors Association and End Representative Management, and I will turn it back to the chair for any public comment.
All right, thank you. Think we have a public comment out there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm gonna struggle. I'm gonna struggle to say this. Uh. Uh, but really for Catherine and the record, um. I just want to say thank you and um, I'm gonna publicly announce my retirement effective November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five today. November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. So it's been a great run. The county's in good hands. We have a lot of great people that work here. We have a great board of supervisors. Um, I'm, I'm proud to have been a part of this team for thirty plus years and. And uh, I'll still be here working until November, but maybe not a lot. So um, I look forward to our closed session discussion, but. First and foremost, it's just been a great ride and I tell people all the time, I've absolutely loved being a county employee and I. I hope that every county employee um, feels the same way at their retirement. I've absolutely loved this. So I look forward to closed session and and thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, publicly, I want to thank you. I've enjoyed my fifteen years working here with you. I don't think I knew you at all until we ran. And so it's been a pleasure. I've learned a lot. Uh, we've had patience with each other. I mean. We jab each other quite a bit. I mean, I, I would text him for ideas on stuff I wrote along in Sacramento and. He just, yeah, he wasn't much help, but he.
Some of your ideas.
My own mind up, you know, and that, that was good. And he's always very helpful and I, I do appreciate you and you'd be hard to replace. So hopefully the c- community can come together and. And find somebody to do equal to what you've done. I don't know if they can achieve that. Uh, but just hope they can.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Charles, I want to publicly thank the sheriff for all his years of uh, service. I think you've been a very fair sheriff. I know people in my district appreciate you, white, black, brown. You've been. You treated everyone equally with integrity and always with a smile on your face in a public community event. And uh, I did get the chance to meet um, the sheriff before he was a sheriff. Cause he had another uh, job duty. He came to my home and said that he had suddenly subpoenaed. Cause uh, I wasn't accepting. I wasn't responding to the grand jury for a meeting request.
I believe he had a Lakers shirt on too that night, if I remember correctly. I think you were watching a Lakers game.
Yeah, yeah. And uh, the sheriff came over to my house. That was very nice. And that's how I got to meet him. Funny story. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Supervisor Robinson.
Two hours on a Tuesday, huh, Sheriff?
Right.
No, I honestly, thank you for, for doing Kings County proud. I uh. I hear only good things from you. You know, we go back, we were, we were actually raised almost as brothers. And Sheriff Robinson has always been fair-handed, easygoing. Uh, he, he has never changed. And uh, we're grateful to have you. Thanks for all the hard work. County's in much better shape. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. When Supervisor Robinson decided to run, he and I had some conversations and he's like, well. What am I gonna do if you have something that comes up? And I'm like, well, I'm gonna try to do everything I can not to put you in that position. So. So far, so good. We're down, we're down to the downhill slide here and I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep my word. I'm gonna do everything I can to not put you in a bad position. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, at this time, we will adjourn and uh, go to Cal PFA and we'll be here next Tuesday, June twenty fourth at nine AM. Sir.